There's a lot of questions out there. We really need to help the public understand more about special districts and what county government can and cannot do to assist special districts or to assist the public with matters related to special districts. So our board of county commissioners decided that they were going to sponsor this educational presentation and try and answer some of the questions that many of you have. So before I begin, though, I would like to just ask people to remember that this is an educational session. This is not an adversarial session. So we really ask everyone to have an open mind and remember, we're all in this together to learn and to not present as speakers or have a negative tone. So we really would appreciate that respect. I just want to share with you that we do have our full board of county commissioners here today. I'd like to introduce you to our chair, if you're not aware. That is Commissioner Christopher Pash. And then we also have Commissioner Sugo. And we have Commissioner Court Voice. Our speakers today, we have speakers from the Oregon Special Districts Association. We do have the executive director Frank Stanton. We have General Counsel Ron Downs. I can't read my writing. They will be presenting first. We also, in a second, we'll have someone from the Department of Revenue. We do have Danette Benjamin, who is the Department of Revenue Finance, Taxation, and Exemptions Analyst. So she'll present, too. What we're going to do is we're going to start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, and our chair will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. He does have some introductory remarks. We'll go through those. And then we will begin with our presentations. The Special Districts Association will present for about 45 minutes and then take 15 minutes of questions. And then we will have the Department of Revenue present for 15 minutes, or I'm sorry, 45 minutes and then take 15 minutes of questions. Before we do the pledge, one more thing is, as you know, I did send a notice out to every special district asking them to submit any particular questions they had, so we could have those in advance. I only heard from one of you in the entire room. So they're going to try and address those questions in their presentation. And if there's other ones, like I said, you may not be able to get them in the 15 minutes that we've allotted. So you may want to follow up with the speakers individually after to ask those questions. So, Commissioner Pash?
Good afternoon. Thank you for all of you for coming. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Something that our board has also done, even though this is not an official board meeting, is we have a report every time that we meet, and Commissioner Voice wanted to give a report. Commissioner Voice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to ask here just a moment for a moment of silence. In the last week, we've had two mass shootings, coincidentally, maybe not coincidentally, on our naval bases. Pearl Harbor, a week ago, two soldiers and several injured. Of course, Pensacola, Florida, naval base there, three citizens and soldiers were killed. And it was just a really dark time for our country. And I would like to just ask us all to just bow our heads in a moment of silence and offer that tribute. Thank you.
I'd also like to remember the three of the Black Hawk Down training mission the other day as well. I want to start this meeting with a statement. There's been a lot of rumors that I am here to dissolve or get rid of special districts. And that is absolutely not true. I don't care what you've read in the papers. I don't care what the rumors are that are going around. Our board is not interested, I believe, in dissolving special districts. I am not interested in dissolving special districts. What I'm interested in doing is looking at each special district and making sure that they are running efficiently and legally. We just had to seat a board in one of our special districts a couple of weeks ago. They didn't have an actual board to run that district. It's not legal to do that. I didn't ask to dissolve that district. I asked our operation, our county director of operations, to look into and reseat a new board there, which we did. So I just wanted to dispel any rumors that we're trying to dissolve special districts. We're just trying to make sure that the districts that we have in our county are run effectively, efficiently, financially are supported, and your tax dollars, the dollars that you pay every year in your property taxes, are being the best spent for what you hopefully receive. That's really all I want to say right now, and I'd like to turn it over to the special districts and let them do their presentation.
Does everyone hear me okay? Again, I'm Frank Stratton. I'm the executive director for the Special Districts Association of Oregon. We're a private nonprofit organization that represents most all of the special districts in the state, almost 960 members of SBIO. So thank you all for being here today. Also, I'd like to thank the county commissioners and Julie for inviting us to be here. Hopefully, we can have a productive afternoon. I can give you some information that you may be aware of. I've also brought a brochure here on what's a special district, so if you want to take it home and read it and share it with all your friends and relatives, they're back there on the back table. So to start off, I'm actually just going to show you a video.
Fire Protection Services Maintaining Rural Cemeteries Providing Safe Recreational Opportunities for Children Finding Solutions for Safe Drinking Water. These are just a few of the public services that Oregon Special Districts provide to their communities.
Can you hear that at all?
Yeah.
Was the, we had it super loud a minute ago. Remember how we early did that?
Make it to the rest of you.
Well, they're working on that. Just a reminder, if anybody wants any coffee, tea, or water, it is in the back. Please feel free to snuggle in with some coffee. You've got a couple hours here, so we'll make sure you're comfortable. Bathrooms, of course, there's bathrooms here. They're out the hall. They're kind of past the entrance way, but you'll find them.
Great, thank you. All right, now for the show.
Fire Protection Services Maintaining Rural Cemeteries Providing Safe Recreational Opportunities for Children Finding Solutions for Safe Drinking Water. These are just a few of the public services that Oregon Special Districts provide to their communities. Generally, special districts are formed when cities and counties are unable to provide these specialized public services to their local residents. They exist in all areas of the state, both urban and rural. Over 1,000 special districts operate in Oregon, representing 32 different service types. Special districts range from very small volunteer-led organizations with no staff to large regional governments with extensive resources. Each day, thousands of Oregonians volunteer their time and efforts for special districts. Brad Humbert and Roger Cosner, along with fellow board members from the Milton Freewater Water Control District, worked hundreds of hours with no funds and limited resources to convince the town to support the levee repair project, which averted potential mass flooding in the downtown area. In Springfield, David Lindelain from the Rain Transit District worked with his team to develop a program that teaches handicapped commuters to safely use their electric scooters while using the bus system, averting countless injuries and potentially saving lives. With one of the smallest budgets in the state of Oregon, Chief Wayne Moore of the Sixes Rural Fire District has professional training with volunteer fire protection group for the last 20-plus years.
Dedication to helping other people.
The most basic grassroots form of government lies within special districts. Members of the public can have a little impact on the direction, control, and services they receive. For example, Kevin Clark and Tammy Tignor of the West Valley Fire District in New Orleans, working with the community and other local organizations, developed a community emergency medical services program that continues to save lives and improve patient care.
It's a community that cares about what goes in front here.
Nationwide government satisfaction surveys show that special districts are the most popular type of government because they are focused on special missions and engaged with the public they serve. Generally, special districts can also provide public services for less cost and in a more efficient manner than other types of governments because of their special focus. Like Ron Tames, general manager of the Roseburg Urban Sanitary District, who, along with his staff and board of directors, saved the city approximately $90 million in development and construction costs by designing and implementing a natural treatment system for the city's wastewater plant. In this time, a intense distrust and frustration with national level government. Special districts are a shining example of democracy in action.
So I'm really glad to see that we have Sixes Fire in the presentation in the video. That was awesome.
You get him in front of a camera.
He looks great in front of a camera, though. It looks like he doesn't have a beard anymore, right?
No, he's still...
He still has, he still has a beard? Okay. So what is a special district? Well, you saw in the video, so that gave you a little bit of an idea. But all special districts are, get their authorization under Chapter 198 of Oregon law. And that essentially says, you're a special district in what they are, and lists all the different types. There's 34 different types of districts. So they're locally controlled and created. They're locally managed by a board of directors. So in the local community, you elect your own board of directors. They oversee the district. They make all the decisions. An exception to that would be a county service district. Counties can actually create their own special districts, and in that case, in the county service district, the county board of commissioners is the board. But with other types of special districts, it's the local elected people in your community that's who oversees the board. There's 1,000 plus statewide in the state of Oregon, reaching virtually every citizen in the state. So obviously, most of them are rural areas, because that's usually why you have special districts, and I'll explain that a little bit later. But there's also big, massive districts, like the Port of Portland is a special district. TriMet up in the Portland region is a special district. So they range from very large entities, but primarily very small, locally grown organizations. And they're also subject to the same laws that any other government has to comply with. So that's one of the challenges of being a really small district, is some of your districts have extremely small budgets, no employees, and you just have the board or your volunteers, and that's it. But under Oregon law, you have to comply with the same types of laws that the cities and counties and everybody else in the state has to comply with, the local budget law, public meetings, public records, ethics, public contracting. It's a handful. And that's what our organization, SBIO, tries to help you with, is to figure out how to do that by training and other research that we can provide. Property tax support and fees, okay? So not all special districts get property taxes. A lot of the utility-based districts, like water, sanitary, electrical utilities, they just rely almost 100% on fees. Other types of special districts rely entirely on property taxes. For instance, library districts or fire districts for the most part, park and recreation districts. One of the things about special districts, where special districts are completely reliant on that type of revenue. Cities and counties get a substantial amount of shared revenue, or cities get lodging and hotel taxes, counties get road taxes, et cetera. Special districts don't get any of that. Nothing comes from the state, completely on your own for what you collect. Powers and duties of each type of district are within their own law. So I mentioned Chapter 198, that lists what types of special districts you can have. And then each type of individual district has a separate chapter in law that says what that type of special district can do. So for instance, fire districts have their own chapter, and then it's Chapter 264 in Oregon law that says, "Fire districts can do the following." And if it's not on that list, they can't do it. That's different than other types of government. Cities and counties have pretty broad latitude in what they can provide for services, especially if they're a rural organization. Special districts, it's specific. So if it doesn't say that you can do it under Oregon law, you can't do it. Give you an example of that, I have a funny story the other day. Road district, okay? There's a lot of small road districts in the state of Oregon. Why does a road district get created? Do we have an idea? Yeah?
Because the people in the community don't have the means to take care of the roads, so they form a district, so that everybody in that district will have to pay towards the road.
Did you hear that answer? The perfect answer. So everybody can pay their fair share because they don't have the ability to take care of those roads. And so what often happens in a road district is, let's say, a road gets put in by a developer at one time. And so maybe you have 50, 100 houses backing you on a rural road. But it's not a county road. It's not a state road. There's no way to take care of that road, other than everyone pitching in, all right? How well does that work? Does everybody want to pitch in to buy gravel for that road, to grade that road, to clean out the culverts?
No.
No. Not everybody wants to pitch in. Everybody's really happy to have their neighbor pitch in or do that work, but they don't necessarily want to pitch in, or maybe they can't. Maybe they don't have the finances. So what you do then is you form a road, those people in that area form a road district, and then everybody's got to pay. Everybody's got to pay their fair share based on the value of their property. Pretty fair, inequitable system. Now, road districts, under their statute and law, they can maintain, build and maintain roads. That's what they can do. So I got a call from a road district the other day that was in a road, there was also a homeowners association in this area. Homeowners Association is a private entity, okay? Private nonprofit. The road district is a government entity. These special districts are all local governments. So the road district says to me, "Hey, great news. We were given a swimming pool by the homeowners association because they don't want to run it anymore, so we want to make sure we have insurance coverage for our swimming pool." And I said, "Well, I've got bad news for you. No, you don't have insurance coverage for a swimming pool, and two, you can't have a swimming pool because you're a road district." The road district doesn't, in the law, does not say you're allowed to have swimming pools and run recreation programs, okay? What is a special district? A special district is not a school district. That's not in Chapter 198 that I talked about. Not education service districts, not community colleges. Now, a lot of those educational entities, they're completely different than special districts. They get a substantial amount of money from the state, right? They're heavily supported. They do have property taxes, but they're a whole different creature whatsoever. Cities, cities are not special districts. Counties are not, except for when they do have county service districts under their jurisdiction. Public utility boards, you may have heard that before, that those are created by cities. They're essentially owned by cities. The non-special districts are leperd cooperatives. Those are private nonprofit organizations. Urban rebuild districts, those are not special districts. Those are essentially a financing mechanism for cities to, for urban rebuild, urban growth. And local improvement districts, those are not special districts. Those are usually part of cities as well, where they have a special improvement area maybe to pave a section of street that's unpaid eventually. So there's, it's hard to read, but there's the types of districts, or the main types. You've got ambulance, airport, cemetery, county service districts, domestic water, drainage, emergency communications, fire protection. I'm not going to read through all of them. The biggest being fire protection districts, 252 fire protection districts. So there's a quarter of the districts in the state are related to fire protection. Libraries, we have 24 fire districts. There's 53 park and recreation districts. So on and on. If you want more information on this, actually, it's in that brochure, or you can also go to the sbio.com website. It's fantastic and enjoyable reading. Where are they located? As I mentioned, all throughout the state. Tons of special districts on the coast. You can see they're pretty much scattered out through any, all the rural areas where there's a population, as well as there are a good number of districts centered in the Atlantic Valley as well. So fiscally responsible. I'd like to think that special districts are the most fiscally responsible type of government because they're the closest to the people. They're accountable to you, the citizens, in your local community. And I mentioned, they have to comply with local government budget law. They have to comply, they have to submit their audits to the state for approval or for review. They don't get any shared revenue. And there's over 350 special districts in the state that have budgets under $100,000. How can you function with under $100,000 and provide any kind of service? It's very difficult. Probably half of the special districts in the state have one employee or less. Example, that would be where you have a fire chief, maybe a part-time fire chief of an all-volunteer district. Volunteer-driven, so there's over 350 special districts that don't have any employees at all. That's how they survive on less than $100,000. We estimate that there's over 10,000 volunteers in special districts statewide. So a lot of those would be firefighters, but there's also library volunteers, there's park and recreation volunteers, there's even drainage district volunteers. I got a call the other day from some drainage district that wanted to know if they could have a community event where everybody came out and helped clean out the ditches. Absolutely, just make sure nobody gets hurt, and signed all these forms and waivers and stuff, but do that. So what does the public think about special districts? So we were involved, actually, in a survey that was conducted this year by a research firm. They surveyed 800 voters statewide in Oregon. The confidence level of the survey was plus or minus 3.5%, and with a 95% confidence level. So what that means is even if you did a huge survey of everyone in Oregon, they're 95% confident that it would come to the same results because of how it's divided up, right? So voters were randomly selected throughout different regions and diverse backgrounds across the state. And I thought it came up with some pretty interesting data. 64% say services provided by special districts are important. That's a pretty big number. I was really happy to see that. 65% said they're more likely to support special districts, knowing that special districts hold public meetings or allow the public to review their records, including employee salaries and how tax dollars are spent. People love that. They like transparency. A majority disagree that the public would be better off if for-profit companies provided many of the services special districts provide. I think this is kind of a shift in public opinion. I think people are starting to realize that it's not always better when the private sector provides service. Doesn't always mean that everybody's going to give as much of a square deal. And I think this shows that. 53% disagreed with that statement, opposed to 21 who agree with that statement. What do you think? 55% agree with Smith, and I've got to read this to you because it's too far away. So, now I can't, I've got, they're both ways, so. Smith says, so that's green, "Special districts are a great form of government because they are local, close to the people, and focused on specific services." Red. Jones says, "Special districts are not the ideal form of government. Cities and counties are already serving local residents. They can provide specific services much more efficiently." Thought that was an interesting result as well. And as far as favorables go, which types of local governments have the highest favorability? Not surprisingly, the state legislature has way down there. It has a higher negative, higher unfavorable than a higher favorable. Special districts, 55, 54% favorable versus 19% unfavorable. You can see how it compares to cities and counties as well. So why do special districts exist, all right? And there's a bunch of different reasons, and I'm going to run through each one of these. Most common, services don't exist without it, okay? How do you get services if you, government-type services, if you live outside of the city? So in Curry County, you've got a city there, a city there, and a city there. Three incorporated cities in the entire county. Huge county. What about all these people out here? How are you going to get services? You form a special district, right? That's why you have a good number of special districts in this state, I mean, in this county. You live in this Agnes area, right? So you have a fire district there. You have a library district there. Do you know the Agnes Ilahi, did I say that right? Fire district, guess what their property taxes are?
Zero.
Zero. Zero. I don't, what, they have bake sales every year to fund your district? I mean, that's how you'd have to survive, right? Is donations and that type of thing, which, that's fantastic. But again, that's why you form special districts. That's the most common reason. If you live outside of the city, you still want those services. You form a district to do it. Another big reason, the city or county can't afford the services. So we're seeing new districts being formed all the time now because the restraints of Battle Measure 5 and then Battle Measure 50 make it very hard for cities and counties to continue to get the growth that they need, especially to fulfill their obligations, like they're growing maybe union contracts or purs or just inflation in general. And so they're looking for ways to be able to find other ways to support those services. And one, here's an example, recently, 2018, Douglas County voters, Douglas County decided they couldn't afford library services anymore, all right? So what happened then? The citizens in Douglas County decided, "Okay, we're going to form a couple library districts." And traditionally, libraries are very popular. We see library, new library districts pass more than any other type of special district right now. Same thing in Josephine County. In 2017, Josephine County wasn't able to operate their libraries, so they formed the Josephine County Library District. "Well, everybody's so happy that the community really stepped up for us," he said, "and they made it clear that libraries are important." Another way that sometimes cities will work, cities will work with districts is, you know, the city doesn't always, they can provide most all services, but sometimes it doesn't make sense, or they can't afford to provide a certain service. And so here's an example in your local community where you've got Port Orford Rural Fire Protection District, all-volunteer department, provides contracted services to the city of Port Orford. So rather than the city of Port Orford having its own fire department, they contract out with the rural district that probably has a bigger boundary to provide those services.
Read the chief's name there.
Chief David Duncan. Thanks for coming, David. Another reason, new service needs. So a couple legislative sessions ago, there were two brand-new types of districts they're creating. Like, "Oh my gosh, you already got 32 different types, so why do you need more types?" Well, it goes back to the same answer that Commissioner Gold said on the road districts. This is a new type of district called a sand removal district. Sand removal district, what the heck is that? Well, in this area outside of Wal-Mart, you have a subdivision essentially that gets buried to the roofs of sand. People can't even get in or out of their houses. Now, it's outside the city limits. So city of Wal-Mart, they don't have any tax money to help these people. That's an unincorporated area. The county, I think rightfully so, in this instance, says, "You know what? We have really limited tax dollars as it is. We can't support our sheriff's department. We can't afford to be going and digging your subdivision out every year. That's just not a service that the county can do." So what they were relying on was... So, what they were relying on was, what were they relying on? Volunteer, and everybody would go around and say, hey, will you contribute? Oh, yeah, I'll contribute, what, next year? I can't contribute this year, I'll contribute next one. So, then you have just a few people that are paying for all the sand removal. So, because of that, they actually went to the legislature and said, we want the authority to create a sand-removal district, so that we can tax everybody in this area their fair share for removing the sand. And that's what they done. Another type goes straight at the same session, a predatory animal-controlled district. In Clama Falls, they now have a predator-controlled district. And again, the county couldn't afford, didn't have the budget to maintain its predator, predator animal services. And the farmers and the ranchers said, these predators are destroying our crops, they're destroying our timber, they need a revenue source for this. So, they actually went and got authorization to create this type of district. We helped them with this, and they did invite me to go shoot coyotes out of their helicopter, but they haven't, they offered it back. Our insurance, a special district doesn't allow them to fly helicopters. So, paying your fair share, this is, so this is where I live, Silverton. Get my pointer here. So, see the blue line? The blue line? That's the city of Silverton. The red line, that's Silver Falls School District. Huge difference. So, in Silverton, I've got a fire district, I've got a library district, and now we're trying to put together a park and recreation district, or the city council's working on a park and recreation district. And why is that? It's all for the same reasons, because, especially in a library district, it used to be a city library district. But what happens with something like a library district, or a park and recreation district? People out here still get to come to the library, right? Especially, they're all within the boundaries of the school district, it's not that far of a drive to go in and use the library, it's not that far to go in and use the amazing city parks. They also, when their house catches fire, the fire department ended up responding, even though they're not getting paid to, because it's outside the city. So, instead, by creating a district that have a boundary, the same boundary as the school district, they're able not only to bring in more tax dollars by spreading that out to a lot more people, but then it's more fair, because then you have all those people that live outside the city boundaries, that then are paying to be able to use those services that they're regularly using inside the city. And I think you kind of have the same example here with, like, Chaco Library, because you have, the city of Brookings has an assessed value of seventy-seven-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, so over this little spot right here. But the Chaco Library encompasses the same boundary as the port and of the school district, so they're able to, essentially, these people are paying their fair share to come in and use those library services. It's a much larger tax-based area. So, final reason, look at that, is regional services. So, you do see consolidations going on, and some of that is primarily up in the metro area, and this is Twallin Valley Fire and Rescue. So, this is a mega district, I would call it. It started out as a small fire district, and then it started, consolidated with another fire district, and then with another fire district, and then it started talking to the cities, because why did it necessarily make sense for each city to have their own district? And so, now, Twallin Valley Fire and Rescue, through consolidations and mergers over the last twenty-some years, provides all of the fire service to thirteen cities and in three different counties up in the metropolitan region. So, how are special districts formed? As I mentioned, that's dictated in chapter one ninety-eight in law, specifies how you do it. The vast majority of special districts are formed by starting an initiative petition among people in that area. So, usually, you have a group, oftentimes a volunteer group, that gets together, and they decide, we want this type of service, they'll form a committee, and then they'll start circulating petitions, they'll draft up a petition. Some of those, sometimes districts are initiated by county commissioners, especially county service districts. There's a required economic feasibility statement that has to be submitted along with the petition, so to show where, how you're going to be able to survive, how you're going to be able to make this district function. If the district wants a property tax, and not all have, like I mentioned, the one fire district, if they want a property tax, that initiative, it has to go to the ballot. The voters have to approve property tax. You cannot create a district, the county, city, whoever else cannot create a district unless it goes to the voters, if they want a property tax. If the district includes the boundaries of the city, then the city has to sign off on it, they have to pass a resolution agreeing that will include their city boundaries, or even a partial portion of it. Now, the county is the administrator of the process. The petitions go to the county, the county collects the economic feasibility statement, et cetera, checks off on the boundaries, but the county does not control the district after it's formed. It's, special districts, again, other county service districts, the other types of special districts are all independent local governments. The county does not have any authority over them. If, in the process, actually, if the county refuses to accept the formation of a new district, they're not allowed to just say that they don't agree with it. If the citizens go through the correct process, they go through the correct steps of submitting the prior documents to the county, and the voters approve it, the citizens can actually go to court if the county does not agree to form the district. So, taxing authority of special districts. Here's, again, I use library districts as an example. So, in their enabling statute, is where it lists out their powers, so that, in this case, is chapter three fifty-seven of Oregon law. And each type of district has a list, like this, of their powers, okay? And I highlighted the main one here under taxation, which is to assess, levy, and collect taxes to pay for the equity. Pay the cost of acquiring sites for construction, reconstructing, altering, operating, and maintaining a library, or for any lawful claims against the district and the operating expenses of the district. That means they can collect money from the taxpayers for a library. That's it. Using funds, tax funds, for other purposes is not allowed by law, all right? And it potentially subjects the individual board members of that district to personal liability for illegal expenditure of public funds. So, in a library district situation, I would explain it this way. If, if the library district wanted to, say, contract with the city or county to provide some services, like accounting services, or security services, maybe, something like that, they can certainly do that, as long as those services are for the library, for the benefit of the library. The library district cannot take funds voluntarily and give it to another government entity, or to a private entity, or anything else, for something that is not related to library services. So, under taxing authority, measure fifty. Has anybody heard of measure fifty? Measure fifty was a constitutional ballot measure, and it essentially put a cap on property taxes in the state, as far as tax assessments go. So, the measure established a permanent tax rate for each taxing district in-state, and when I say district, I, taxing district, that means everybody. Cities, counties, special districts, school districts, anybody who collects property taxes, it applied to. And under that, values were rolled back to the nineteen ninety-five level, and capped at three percent growth earlier after that. So, starting in that year, when it was passed, nineteen ninety-seven, assessed value growth has been limited to three percent a year on the market value growth. To give you another example of my personal situation, I was really lucky back before the measure fifty. I bought an old, beat-up house in Silverton, built in nineteen ten. My property tax assessed value on the house is ninety, was ninety-five thousand dollars when I bought that house, okay? I have put a ton of work into that house, I haven't added on to it, so my house hasn't been reassessed, because I've just improved the insides, essentially, I've managed square footage. So, today, my assessed value, because it's only gone up three percent, is now a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year on my house. My Zillow value says my house is worth six hundred thousand dollars, because it's in the metro, of course, it's close into the line of the valley. However, I have neighbors up the street that built a brand-new house, same square footage as my house, they're paying fifteen thousand dollars a year in property taxes, I'm paying less than three thousand dollars in property taxes for basically the same house, because of the way the system works now. So, the permanent rate that was capped cannot, so what else also happened is you have your permanent rate on value, it's property taxes, that was capped in the measure fifty. It can never go up again. It can also never go down again. It's fixed, set by the constitution. Now, a special district can choose to not levy its full rate, okay? But if it does that, then that money can't go somewhere else. That just means that then, that money stays with the taxpayers. Taxpayers don't pay as much. Doesn't mean that that money can then be used for other services. So, actually, you know, in two thousand and eight recession, two thousand and eight through ten, we actually saw some special districts' values go backwards because of the housing prices, okay? So, it's not a guarantee that that three percent is going to be there every year. Now, most governments, I think, most even counties, cities, no matter who you are, three percent growth is not sustainable in most situations. You have health insurance, health insurance costs going up about fifteen percent a year on average, you have property liability insurance, inflation, you have maintenance of facilities, you have replacement of equipment, fire trucks, tires, computers, books, you have employee cost of living raises, you have union contracts, and you have your PERS liability. Now, not everybody's in PERS. Most people would be surprised to know that only about twenty-five percent of special districts are in the PERS system. Probably half don't have the retirement program at all, and the rest usually have maybe some kind of 401K or something like that. Another thing, just on that example I gave you with my house, most people think that your value resets at sale. So, if I went and sold my house today, it would get reset at that seven-fifty-thousand-dollar number, does not, stays at that. So, my lesson to you on economics today, if you go and buy a house, you're going to buy a retirement house, you'll buy an old house. Buy an old house, don't go buy a brand-new house, because you're going to pay way, way less in property taxes. Special districts can pass what's called a five-year option levy, and that, if that's approved by the voters, which means that you can collect an extra amount for your services more than your tax, your permanent tax rate, but you have to go back to the voters every five years to reaffirm that. So, just a few comparisons here in the county, and then I'll be done with my presentation. So, probably not a surprise to you here in the room, but Curry County has by far the lowest tax rate of anyone in the state, I mean, and that column is chopped off. Well, you can't read that column anyway, what I'm talking about. So, your, the overall tax rate for all local governments in Curry County is eight-point-eight-six, eight dollars and eighty-six cents. The average for all other states in Oregon is sixteen dollars and ninety-two cents, so the overall tax rate in Curry County is half of the rest of the average of the state of Oregon. Now, Molloma County, where none of us want to live, that's twenty-four dollars per thousand, so three times.
Are you talking about including all the special districts, not just the county?
That is a consolidated report, correct? I believe. I could be wrong, but maybe our Department of Revenue should be there then. Yeah, I have to be right, because no way is the county's rate that high. That's the consolidative rate of everyone. All of you combined, the county, the school district even, the cities, et cetera, half of what the rest of the state is. As far as where special district share of that goes, that's, the way I calculate it, based on the graph that's in the county's budget, is that it's about eighteen percent of the total property taxes collected in the state, I mean, in Curry County go to special districts. As far as library districts, this is, shows the average of library districts in the state, of all the library districts, and I think that your library districts are kind of right on average. The average rate is right around fifty cents, yours range from forty-three cents to sixty-six cents, and the total dollars is right in line, you know? If you look at, a good comparison might be, the Josephine County, which is another county next to you that struggles with finances, their library district collects one-point-four million dollars a year, all right? Jackson County's library district collects ten million, seven-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars a year. Fire districts, man, your fire districts are wholly, they are not funded well. You guys do an incredible job. Let's give a round of applause. Yeah, I don't know how you can even keep your equipment running with those kinds of numbers, so congratulations for everything you do with your volunteers, that's remarkable. Port districts. So, port districts have actually very low property taxes. You can see the port of Brookings Harbor being your largest port, property taxes at two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars there, but this is where I think you need to keep things in perspective. This is a report that was published in two thousand and fourteen by the Oregon Economic Development Department of Business Oregon on Economic Benefits of Public Ports. So, the port of Brookings Harbor, they employ eight-hundred-and-sixteen jobs in your local community to the port of Brookings Harbor, with the local, this is the local economic impact of over fifty-two million dollars of annual impact.
But that's five years ago.
That's five years ago, correct. It's five years ago, it's even gone up, I would assume, right? And then you can see the other ports as well, Gold Beach, thirty-two million dollars impact, and Port of Port Orford, nine million dollar impact. Statewide, it's even a bigger number, I didn't put the statewide column up here, but add basically another ten million dollars to those numbers, if you want to know what the statewide impact is. So, in conclusion, you know, I think special districts, in my opinion, are all about self-determination. They're the one type of government in this country where people can actually feel like they made a difference, where you feel like you can be involved in your local community, you know, especially with everything crazy that's going on in Washington, D.C., this is where democracy makes sense, is at the local level. They're locally controlled and accountable to the people that they serve, fiscally conservative, meet public needs. I love this picture here, this is one of our park and recreation districts, they have an annual festival every year, they're the center of the community, River Grove Park and Rec. They're mainly rural, meeting rural needs, transparent, volunteerism, these districts could not run without volunteers for the most part, closest to the people. And what I've found, in most areas of the state, counties and special districts are usually very close partners, and work extremely well and close together, because, like I said, the people in rural areas cannot get the services, to live in incorporated areas that the county is responsible for, could not get services that they need without special districts. And that concludes my remarks, thank you.
So, we have a couple minutes for questions. Commissioner Gold, you had a question, do you want to just ask that real quick?
Well, I have a quickie here about health districts, I didn't understand on your list, are they special districts?
So, there was a question about health districts, and if they're special districts?
Yes, they are special districts. And, yeah, I didn't get the date on it, because there's only one, but they're obviously large and important.
Okay, I have one more quickie question. What role, if any, do county commissioners have in determining policy for special districts, including the determination of how their tax dollars should be spent?
So, the question was, what role, if any, or obligation do county commissioners have in determining how special district tax dollars are spent?
And their policies.
And their policies. The question is none. Special districts are self-government entities.
I just wanted to emphasize.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Page, in his introductory remarks, said that he and the commission were interested in special districts running officially, efficiently, and legally. Does the county have, what sort of authority does the county have in that regard? And if they have none, whose authority, under whose authority are special districts run officially and legally?
Okay, the primary answer to that is the board director. That's who governs the district. Now, there's certain- Now, there's certain, are there certain activities that the county is responsible for? For instance, tax collection, counties approve planning, are in charge of land use planning and permitting, all that kind of thing within county jurisdictions, but for certain type of districts, say, a fire district, they have no official role in determining how a fire service is gonna be provided. Is that, answered your question?
Part of that, though, is making sure that they have legal boards seated, and those boards are operating per state law.
That is correct, to make sure that they have legal boards in place in the county when there's a vacancy, and a district cannot decide how to fill that vacancy, or they just can't agree, then that's when the county will step in and can appoint the people to fill that vacancy.
But, does the county decide whether a special district board is acting under its state?
No, the special, the county has no, no authority whatsoever to come into a district and say, "You're not operating by public meetings law, we're going to do something about it, shut you down." Usually, a county will say, "We can help you out, this is what we've found, this is what we think you should be doing, you should call the Special Districts Association, they'll come to a training for you," but they can't come in and say, "We're going to somehow penalize you or do anything like that."
Can I interrupt one second? We've got a lot of seats up here in front, if any people in the back want to come and sit, there's probably 10 or 12 seats up here.
On that, on that point that you had, the only thing that, it really comes down to one thing, as far as the power of the county over the special districts, it is simply to, in essence, under ORS 198, to help them if they are having trouble filling boards. So, if you have a situation where a district has no board members left, or they, they can't get new board members, that's when the county steps in and helps. And if you have no electors, if you have no potential board members, that is really when the county can look to possibly dissolving. I know there was a question on here about, can a county arbitrarily dissolve a special district? They can't. They cannot, whatsoever. It's very limited circumstances. It has to be essentially the easiest of ones, too. If it's in an uninhabited area, meaning nobody lives there anymore, right? Or, if they can't fill the vacancies on board, on elected board, those are the only two. And then there's a caveat to that, it has to be still in the best interest of that special district, it has to be in the best interest of the district to dissolve it in that circumstances. So, it's pretty rare when we've ever seen a special district dissolve. I don't, I don't recall any, actually, I remember my 26th year working as a special district, so, I'll turn back. There was a, one more question. How do grants from federal and state affect the special sections?
Is there a different type of guideline, taxation, and that type of thing?
Not taxation. So, the question was, how do grants affect special districts, or can they get grants? That is one thing that special districts are really hampered on, because most grants come from the federal government. Federal government does not give grants to special, usually specifically to special districts, mainly grant funds will go through a city or a county, and then dispersed to special districts, it's for a certain project. There are exceptions to that, for instance, fire districts, there's a lot of homeland security money available that fire districts have been applying for, there's three or four big, main federal grants that fire districts can reply to specifically to the federal government or directly, but most grant funds are not available to special districts.
Thank you, you answered my question.
Hi, I'm Connie Hunter, and I live in Brookings in South Curry County, and I wanted to say, comment about the effectiveness of our fire districts, and the importance of volunteerism and the piece of that, but we also have to include something that's a unique relationship with the City of Brookings and the Harbor Fire District. In your example, you used the City of Fort Orford and the fire district up there, the fire district providing services to the city. And the City of Brookings actually provides services to unincorporated areas of South Curry County. So, if we're gonna really give kudos to all the people that deserve kudos in regards to our fire district and the management of our local fire issues, we have to thank the City of Brookings and for their hard work there. If you have more questions about how that relationship worked, Janelle Howard, our city manager, is here.
Right, thank you for those comments, and I think they illustrate what Commissioner Pash said at the beginning, all in this together, right? It's all how to serve the people of Curry County and how to do that the best we can, thank everyone cooperating as best they can, looking for those solutions, is what we should go about, yeah.
I gather from what you're saying, that the county can't come in and tap the funds of the special, special district, is that correct?
The question was, can the county come in and tap the funds of the special district? And the answer is no.
I think, did you say tap, or tap? Tap, you confiscate, tap all we want to. Thank you.
If I may, I haven't heard any discussion on anything like dissolving the districts, or, you know, we do have 47, okay? Josephine County has 17, so, if there's a way to pool our resources, that's what I'm hearing. Is there a way this little county can overcome? Nobody's come to rescue us. We do everything we can, we give grants, other forms of funding, but I've not heard any discussion on the board, maybe Commissioner Gold could correct me in case I've missed it, or Commissioner Pash, but I haven't heard anything like that. This turnout is the first stage, in my opinion, of how we solve the problems coming, coming up. The greatest threat in our county right now, not the library, it's not earthquakes, it's not huge floods, greatest threat to our citizens and their public safety is fire. And so, we have unpaid firefighters, and I'm very, very concerned about that. I'd love to be wrong, I'd like, 10 years from now, boys overstated it back in those days, but right now, I don't think it can. So, keep that in mind. I want to thank the Elslos, I don't know how close we are to winding down, Patty and Carol for the work you did, thank you very much.
I just want to make sure you think I'm saying that.
I just want to make one clarification on powers of the county. One thing our county does do is, they do have ordinance whereby they can borrow money to a special district. So, that is, we're unique in that way.
Out of our road fund?
Yes, out of our road fund. So, that is something different, or something else that our county can do that some counties don't do.
Could you repeat that?
Sure, there was a question about powers of the county and what they do, and our county is unique, we are one of the few counties that has opted to adopt an ordinance whereby we can borrow money to a special district out of our road fund. We have an ordinance that says a special district can apply for funding, and we can help them out on that, so.
Which, what, borrow or lend?
Borrow. The county can borrow, let's just borrow, and lend to a special district upon application. So, that's just, just wanted to clarify that, that we did have that ability in our county as something unique. So, with that, we'll turn it over and hear from the Department of Revenue.
You know, you were excited to get out of here and not hear some boring property tax stuff, but I'll try to make it entertaining. Can you ask her, okay, I've got a little bit of a quote going on, thank you very much for the cough drop. So, my name is Jeanette Benjamin, and I am the Finance, Taxation, and Exemptions Team Lead for the Department of Revenue. I recognize some faces in the room from local budget law training. So, we do trainings around the state every year for budget law, for special districts, cities, counties, and stuff, so I've gotten a few of you over the years. My team primarily works with the assessor's offices and the collector's office, so your Curry County assessor's in the room today, hi Jim. The longest-serving assessor in the whole state, so Jim was around before Measure 50 and Measure 5, right? Have you been in office since before then? Since before Measure 50 and Measure 5?
Yeah, before both of them.
So, he experienced the property tax system as it was before, it's the current stage now, so. I was asked today to prepare a little bit of information for you guys on, just kind of general property tax information, as well as a little bit of local budget law, specifically where citizens can be involved in the budgeting.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, just got, hey, can I interrupt you?
You're fine, no worries. As well as, what happens if there's any changes to districts as far as their levies go? What, what happens to that permanent rate if districts merge or consolidate? So, I'll try not to repeat some of the great information that SDAO gave us earlier, but I'm on vacation, right, so I may kind of forget for a second, very, very good. But there's three main types of property taxes, and I'm sure all of you kind of have some of this knowledge already, but I'll try to add some details you might be missing. So, the first is your permanent rate taxes. So, this is what we're talking about with Measure 50, what was established, and there were winners and losers with Measure 50. So, how it worked was, if you would ever levy for operations, you were given a permanent rate, but it was based off of the taxes you used in a certain period of time prior to Measure 50 being passed. So, if your district levied a tax back in 1940 for operations, you were given a permanent rate, but it was based off of what you'd done in the last few years before Measure 50 was passed, and I'm not sure what that timeframe was. So, that's how we ended up with districts with zero permanent rates, because they hadn't needed operation money in that time, and we also had districts like the City of Hutton, who has like $12 per thousand permanent rate. So, there is a very big extremes between the rates. Generally, a lot of them are around the $3 to $4 range statewide. We have local option levies, which can be for five years for operations, or 10 years for a capital purchase, and these are to supplement your permanent rate, so they're in addition to the permanent rate, and like was mentioned before, these are voter-approved. The big thing to remember about the voter approval on this, is that if it is a March or a September election, that it requires a double majority. So, half the voters have to turn out, and then half of those have to vote in affirmative to pass it. If it's a May or November election, it's just a simple majority. And then we also have general obligation bonds, which are, you know, your big projects that you're doing, and you ask for, to sell bonds, and when you ask the voters to sell bonds, they approve the levy to repay that bond. So, the big thing about these is that permanent rates and local options are subject to Measure 5 compression, which I'm gonna go over a little bit more in a second, and that bonds are not. So, there's a basic calculation, a basic formula for how to calculate your taxes, it's your rate times the value in your area, that equals the tax that you're gonna receive. But along the way, there's things that can impact any one of those parts of the equation. So, we're gonna talk about all of these, but the impact on the rate, we have the Measure 50 and Measure 5 limitations, as well as any new local options or bonds. For the impacts on the value, we have exemptions, special assessments, and urban renewal, and then impacts on tax, there are early pay discounts, as well as people that just don't pay their taxes. So, looking at the impacts on your rate, the first is Measure 5, so Measure 5 was passed in 1990, and the 90s were a really interesting time for property taxes, because that's when we shifted from our old system to the current one. I'm sure a lot of you were here in the 90s and voted on these, and they, Measure 5 and Measure 50 seemed like really good ideas at the time, because they were there to kind of limit the growth, so as a taxpayer, you weren't getting these extreme fluctuations in your taxes every year, but they did have the unintended consequences of really limiting your ability to change that rate if you needed it. So, Measure 5 put limits on the taxes that could be assessed on any property based on its real market value, or the amount that you would sell it in an arms-length transaction. Those limits are $10 per thousand for general government, and $5 per thousand for education. Measure 50, which came along several years later, established the permanent rate system that we have now, and also established the value system we have now, which is, you have a real market value, and you have a maximum assessed value, which is that number he was talking about earlier, which was your 90 or 95 value minus 10%, plus 3% every year, and then you have your assessed value, which is simply the lesser of those two. So, again, your taxes are based on your assessed value, but the compression calculation is based on your real market value. And I have a few examples of that in a moment. So, the way compression works is it starts with any local option levies, so if you have local option levies on your property and you're in compression, those are gonna go away first, and then it's gonna go to your permanent rates, and it's gonna be proportionally to all the levies that are on that property. You don't lose general obligation bonds to compression, you only lose your permanent rates and your local option levies. You guys have really low compression in Curry County, you're the lowest in the state, so this isn't something you have to worry about a lot. I think your compression rate right now is .01, or 0.1. The state average is 2%. So, you guys are doing really good. But how compression works is, again, your taxes are calculated off of your assessed value, but compression is off of your real market value. So, this is a really, really simplified example, but we have two neighbors, and so these two houses have existed since prior to Measure 50, prior to Measure, Measure 5, excuse me. So, when they were given permanent, when they were given assessed value, or maximum assessed value back in Measure 50, they were both set at the same assessed value, because they probably looked the same, you know, they were in the same neighborhood, they had similar features. But over the years, House Number 2 has gotten a little bit more desirable, maybe House Number 1 kind of fell into disrepair a little bit, or better view came over for House Number 2. So, when we're looking at these now, House Number 1 has a lower real market value than House Number 2. So, the assessor's office does this calculation twice on every property, they do it for education and they do it for general government. So, we're gonna start with House Number 1, where we have the total combined tax rate for general government is $14 per thousand. When you calculate it by the assessed value on that property, the taxes that are extended should be $2,469, same as on House Number 2, because they both have the same assessed value. But when you put it into a compression example, a compression calculation, we have $10 per thousand for general government, which equals, the real market value is $220,000, so the maximum amount of taxes that can be extended on that house are $2,200. So, that means House Number 1 has to be compressed by $269.38. So, again, that's gonna start with any local option levies, and then it's gonna proportionally remove any permanent rate levies. House Number 2, though, has a higher real market value, the real market value is $280,000, so they can receive up to $2,800 in taxes on that property. Because the amount being assessed is less than that, they're not gonna have any compression. So, you've got neighbor 1, neighbor 2, same assessed value, same tax districts, one's gonna pay $269 more taxes than the other. That's how compression works. There is a really good video on this on YouTube, if you Google "property tax fairy" for Oregon, there's a video that explains compression and the values. I think you have a link to it on your website as well, for the Curry County Assessor's Office. I have vacation brain, so I have to look at my notes right now. Other impacts, our impacts to the value, so something that's really important for you guys to consider is the work of the legislature. The legislature every year meets, and they're, well, they meet every other year for the long session than every other year for the short session, and in the long session, they generally have a lot of bills that have to do with exemptions. So, property tax exemptions are the ways that entities don't have to pay property taxes. We have 120 exemptions in the state right now. All of you receive an exemption in some form, whether it's your car, which is exempted because you pay a license on it, or your personal property in your house, your mattresses, your TVs, your computers, those are all exempted by statute. But there's also exemptions out there for churches, for public buildings, for nonprofit corporations, or charitable organizations, I should say, there's all sorts of different exemptions out there. And some of them have an economic development component, so, you know, they do good things to the community with bringing in jobs and stuff, some of them provide other services like churches and charities. So, they have a lot of good things with exemptions, but they're also a very popular tool for the legislature, and they have a direct impact on how much you're gonna receive in taxes, because they take value out of the system. So, when they exempt property, that's less value the taxes get calculated off of. Because we're a rate-based system, it's a direct loss. When we're a levy-based system, we have other tax, other levies get raised in order to compensate for that loss, but we don't have that currently. The other thing is special assessments, so there's about nine of these, I think, which are mainly for like farm or timberland, and it's assessed in a different manner based on the restrictions of the use. So, you know, they're recognizing that you can only use this land for farming, or you can only use this land for timber, and they want to keep those, those uses there, so they assess it at a much lower rate than they would if it was just regular property out there for any use. You guys have urban renewal in Curry County, you have many plans, just two for Gold Beach and Brookings, does that sound familiar? Okay. So, urban renewal is a way for cities to divert revenue from some of the other districts in order to come back light. So, it basically works like when they adopt an urban renewal plan, they freeze the value, and then any new value that's gained in that area... is put into a calculation that does what's called division of tax. So they come up with a rate that is for the urban renewal area, that's basically a little skim off of everybody else's rate. It was started in the 60s as a housing program. And it was, there was like a federal match, so the federal government gave some money, and then the local governments had to match it with tax money. So they did this in order to get this federal money, and then the federal money dried up. So now they have it for light. So light is pretty broad, what they can use it for. It can be anything from, we don't have enough lights on this street, to we've got a whole block of dilapidated buildings. And there's different plan types as to which levies they can divide. Some can only divide permanent rates, some can divide local options and bonds. Excuse me, not possible. So that's another funding method that counties and cities have to get money for special projects. And then the last thing we have is the impact on the taxes. So we have trimester billing system in Oregon, so you can pay your taxes in thirds, but if you pay all of it by November 15th, you get a 3% discount. If you pay two-thirds by November 15th, you get a 2% discount. So that impacts how much taxes are coming to you. And then we also have uncollectibles, which, you know, those are pretty low because what happens if you don't pay your property taxes? So three years, they take your house. So we have a pretty good collection rate in the state, I think it's like 95%. That's where you guys are too. The last thing that you have is also large value appeals. When large companies, essentially assessed companies, so these are companies that are appraised by the Department of Revenue, and they have a million-dollar value. If they're appealing their taxes, that can be pretty costly to the county. So there's some mitigation tools that the county has to hold your tax revenue until that appeal is done, is so that you don't have to come up with a huge amount of money if they lost. Any questions so far? Property taxes are so interesting, you guys just look so lively right now. Like I'm nerd out on taxes here. Okay. So a little bit overview of the property tax cycle because all of you from special districts are really kind of the core of why we have property taxes, as well as why I have my job teaching local budget law. So the property tax cycle starts with local governments. So your job is to adopt your budgets, and you have some timeframes on when you have to do that. You have to do that by June 30th, and then you have to certify your taxes to your assessor's office by July 15th. Your assessor has to appraise the property, and they have to calculate the taxes. They have to have their work done by September 25th. They turn that over to the tax collector, sometimes it's the same person in certain counties. But the tax collector has to have their work done with printing and statements, and checking with the other counties, and doing all that stuff, by October 25th. That's when the tax statements are supposed to be mailed by. And then your first payment is due to the treasurer by November 15th. So the majority of you should get a good fair chunk of your resources by early December, late November. Does that sound about right? Hopefully. Some of you that are very small, your county may just buy out your tax levy because what the taxes are paid out on is the distribution schedule that's based on all the levies in the county. So if you're a very small levy, rather than sending you checks for, you know, 30 cents or a dollar or $3 here and there, they may just buy out your levy altogether at once, and then they'll take your portion of any distribution. Because you're going to get a portion of every payment that's received because you're all part of this distribution schedule. Okay. So I was asked to kind of focus on citizens' involvement, local budget law. So most of you should be fairly familiar with local budget law if you work for the district. A lot of board members here, is that what we got? Yeah? Okay. So you should have some familiarity with it. If you're not, that's okay. So budget law is a statutory scheme that sets standard procedures for municipal corporations to follow when they're budgeting. It's found in 294-305 through 294-565. It's very interesting reading, you should all be doing that every 90 for that. There's administrative rules that go with it, clarify? There are certain districts that are not subject to budget law. They mentioned some districts earlier, and it's kind of the same thing. The theme of it is districts that don't get a lot of the revenue from property taxes. So they're, they're getting revenue from other sources, like fees, user fees and stuff. Property taxes really there is a way for citizens to have to save from where their money goes. So if your revenue is primarily from non-tax revenue, then you don't generally have to follow budget law, unless you choose to impose a tax. So these are outlined in statute, this is the purpose of local budget law. So it establishes standard procedures. I should be able to go into any one of your districts throughout Curry County, kind of figure out where you're at. You should have similar publications, you should have similar format. You have minimum information that's required to be published regarding the budget, and I should be able to go in and see that. You have to have certain meeting notices, you have to have certain, certain levels of information for budget law. It's going to outline to the public your programs and your fiscal policies. What are you doing with public's money, how are you spending it, how healthy is the finances of your district? It requires you to estimate those resources and requirements. You have to have a balanced budget, so where's your money going to come from from the area, and how are you going to spend all of that? And then, of course, it encourages citizen involvement, and we'll talk about this a little more in a minute, but citizens have a lot of opportunity to be involved with the budget process. And the last thing it does is it controls the expenditure of public funds. When you get to the end of your budget process, you have to adopt what's called appropriations. Those are your legal spending authority, and it's your limit on spending. So your whole goal is to get to that. So you have to follow budget law if you want to levy taxes or you want to spend money. That's, that's the way that the illegals not do it. Somebody asked earlier about what can happen to districts that aren't doing their stuff. So the county board can challenge a district's budget if they didn't follow local budget law. So your budget law can, your budget can be challenged, your process used can be challenged by your assessor's office, by your town board, by the Department of Revenue, by ten or more interested citizens who get together. Any of them can take you to tax court and challenge the process you used if they don't think you did it right. It doesn't happen very often. I think the last time the Department of Revenue did it was like 1985, and we had a district that just kind of ignored what we said. So we're generally here to be educational, not punitive. So we're going to work with you if there's issues happening, and not necessarily go to that next step of taking you to court. There's also a civil liability component. So if you're overspending your district's appropriations or doing stuff outside of budget law, just kind of a blatant, the statute uses malfeasance in office or willful want to neglect. So you're doing it on purpose, then you can be held personally liable for the return of that money and any other penalties that come with that. There's four main phases in the budget process. So the first phase is the proposal of the budget. Then we have approving the budget, adopting the budget, and then some changes. So again, everything you're doing is to get to that appropriation authority. And I'll talk about kind of where the citizens become involved in each of these. So the first phase is the proposal of the budget. So the first thing that happens here is that your board of commissioners, or your governing body, whatever the case may be, they're going to appoint a budget officer. So this might be a specific position within your district. It might just be somebody who drew the last, the short straw. But your budget officer is in charge of kind of compiling the budget for you guys. And they're going to do that based on the direction of whoever's in charge of the district. Or if you guys don't have an executive officer, it's going to be the board. So in most cases, your fire chief's usually going to be your budget officer. They're doing that in the, in like the fire district, excuse me. They're going to do that under the direction of the board commissioners. It could be the library district, it could be, you know, one of your staff that's doing that again, under the direction of the board. I think it's the board commissioners earlier, and I just meant government bodies, excuse me. So they're going to be compiling the budget based on everything they know you're going to be doing, anything they know resources-wise that's coming in. They're going to be paying attention to what the governing body has told them are their priorities for the year because that's going to fund what they can try to do. And this is, this role, the actual drafting of the budget, is primarily done by the budget officer. But again, citizens should be involved with the district throughout the year if they want to have a say where their money's going and be telling them, this is what we want you guys to be doing. This is why we're electing you to do this. So it's kind of a political thing there. Your citizens are putting you in office to do something, and that's what your, your budget's going to reflect. The budget officer is also going to publish your first series of notices. So you guys have to follow budget, excuse me, public meeting law. But in budget law, there's some very strict notice requirements. So these are on top of your regular public notice requirements. So this is, again, the theme of budget law is to get the public involved and to make them aware. So budget law has a little bit more notice requirements than maybe your regular meeting law. The second phase is really the first time that citizens can be directly involved in the budget process as far as, you know, sitting in the meetings and actually working on the budget. So this is the phase where the budget committee is going to review and approve the budget. So your budget committee is made up of an equal number of citizen electors and governing bodies. So if you have five governing bodies, you should try to fill five positions on your budget committee. We know that it doesn't always happen, and there's some rules for quorum that will reflect if you can't get enough citizen involvement, on how you count your quorum. But you do have to handle citizens. When you're on the budget committee, it's not governing body and citizens. It's, we're all the budget committee, we all have equal say, equal authority. No one vote is worth more than any other vote. And you can't bring the mayor in for a tie vote, or the chief in for a tie vote, that doesn't work. It's just the budget committee as a whole. So you guys have to, as a budget committee, come sort, come to some sort of agreement in order to pass that budget because the other phases rely on you passing the budget. Any questions on that so far? Come on, you guys. Okay. So the budget committee's job is to, again, receive the budget and hear the budget message. They're going to hear and consider public comments. So this is why you give a special notice, a special meeting requi, notice. It's because you want the public to know that this is what you're talking about and give them an opportunity to come in and either speak in front of the budget committee, or else they can submit written comments. The budget committee is then going to discuss and review the budget. They can make any changes that they want as long as the whole committee agrees on it. And then they're going to adopt, excuse me, approve the budget as they've decided to. The next phase is where the governing body's going to take a look at it, and they're going to actually adopt the budget. So again, the budget committee has approved the budget, they're all done now. Your citizens can go sit down and just watch things happen. You're going to hold a second hearing, which you're going to publish a summary of what they approved, and give the public an opportunity to speak again on that. They can make changes again to the budget, it's pretty limited as to how many they can change, how much they can change it before they have another hearing if they decide to increase the taxes at all. Because remember, your taxes are a limit, you can go up to that amount, you don't have to levy that full amount every time if you don't need it. But if they decide to increase the amount of taxes they've asked for, or increase their expenditures beyond a certain limit, then they have to hold a second hearing. And then when they, they're done with their review or second hearing if they need to, they would go ahead and adopt the budget, including their tax certification and their budget resolutions. They also have to categorize the taxes by their Measure 5 limitation and adopt their budget as a whole. So there is another opportunity during that hearing for more public comment. The last phase in the budget is changes after adoption. So anytime you need to make a change to those spending limits that you set up, your appropriations, you have to go through some sort of formal process. It might just be a board resolution, or it might be a supplemental budget, those are the two most common. But again, if you are changing your spending limits, what you told the public you're going to spend on money, then you have to make some sort of formal action to do that. Okay. So the last thing I was going to talk to you guys about is the different changes to special districts and what that would do to your, your permanent rates. So there's six main types of changes that can happen. You have annexation, so that's when you're taking in new territory. In that case, your, your rate is going to extend to that new territory. You could withdraw from an area, so you're removing area from your territory. In most cases, your permanent rate is just going to go away from that territory. But if you have something like bonds or possibly a local option that has a capital component to it, then it may stay on that property until that's finished out. You can divide your tax, your district, where you just split it into two. And in that case, your, your rate's going to split out between those two areas. You can completely dissolve your district, which would also eliminate your levy unless there was some sort of bond attached to it, I believe there's still a component to make sure you repay that. And then the last two, if they're the most common, are merging and consolidating. So when you're merging, you're taking two districts that were formed under the same statute, and you are, that provide the same services, and you're going to merge them into one district, one surviving district. And then when you're consolidating, both districts are going away and they're forming a whole new district. In either case, your levy, the same thing happens to your permanent rate levy. And that's going to be what I have here. So we have, this is an example of two. I just want to be sure that all of those things that you just talked about, merging and so forth, take voter approval, is that correct? You know, the Department of Revenue doesn't oversee how these things happen. So I, that's more of a question for SDAO.
But you are correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And some of those type of things aren't allowed depending on the type of district.
Correct.
Division, that'd be like a water control district, but it would apply to most types of districts.
He said that some of these things don't apply to all types of districts, like a water control district can't divide.
Or they can't, they're not.
And they can't, oh, sorry, they can, but others can't. So my role at Department of Revenue is to make sure what, what's done at the end is right, but I don't know how those other processes happen. So we're just there to oversee that the levy is where it should be. So I can't tell you what districts can include, or where they can spend their money. I'm prohibited from talking about fiscal policy. I have my own opinions, but I can't tell you. So, anyway, so we have a merger and consolidation example. So your, the same, your permanent rate is handled the same way in this situation. So what your assessor's office is basically going to do is they're going to take the rates from those two districts, they're going to add them together, and they're going to add the assessed value, and they're going to divide that out and find out what your permanent rate is. So this is an example, we have two RPDs that are going to combine. So RPDA has assessed value of $56 million and a permanent rate of 4.4781. So the total taxes that would have been raised from that area are a little over $252,000. RPDB has an assessed value of $53,943 and some change. Their permanent rate's 4.4533, so the amount of taxes that would have been raised is $240,000 and some change. So when we add up the assessed value and the taxes, we then take those and divide them together to get a new permanent rate per dollar, which we convert to $1,000 because there's a lot of decimals in property taxes. So the new permanent rate for this district, if they were to merge or consolidate, is 4.4659. So taxpayers in what was RPDA are going to get a little less taxes, but taxpayers in what was RPDB, their taxes are going to be, go up. So there's winners and losers in the merger and consolidation situation. It's not that you just get to set a new permanent rate, you have to take what would have been raised and then divide it out amongst the areas again. There's lots of resources for property tax information out there. The Department of Revenue's website has a lot. I can email you them if you want to email me, I think most of you know me. But if you don't, all of our information's here at the back, in the net. There's Melanie and Jean back at the office. Trying to think if there's anything else. Oh, I did write one note earlier about governing bodies' authority to dissolve districts. There is a statute that says that the county commissioners can start the dissolution process if the Department of Revenue or the Secretary of State's office has notified them that the district did not comply with either budget law or their audit requirements for three years. So it's basically, we've tried to get ahold of them, they're not filling out what they're supposed to do. Here's your chance to get ahold of them, and if not, you can start the solution procedures. So that's the only one that we have any sourcing of. Okay?
Thank you.
We hope them. I have property tax questions.
Nobody has any questions for the net?
Nobody likes property tax, they're excited.
I know sometimes people are great to ask questions of, so please reach out individually to the speakers or to myself, and I'll pass those on. I know I have received questions from some of you about budget, some budget law. Specifically, can you share resource, like can you share the same person who's preparing the budgets? What type of notices have to be given, things of that nature? And I have been referring people to the DOR handbook on their site and also to the Special Districts Association. But I know there's some questions out there, so let's, like I said, if you don't want to answer them, we can get you the answers after the line or later. Before we wrap up, Commissioner Pash just has some closing remarks and some things just to share with you, and then we'll be on our way.
I won't pretend to any of you that my looking into special districts in the last several months in the county gave me an education about it, because it did, and it gave me a lot of general knowledge. And I appreciate everyone coming here today to learn more about them. What I want to ask you is, when was the last time any of you here that weren't on to board of a special district, sat at a special district's board meeting when they did their budget?
Ever?
That you've actually sat on their budget meetings with them and gone through their budgets? I would probably say about 30% in here. There's a lot. There's a lot that happens in these budgets, and there's, our county council does disagree with the special districts council. There are broader ways that we can look into the use of some of the planning of these special districts, and that might be a conversation for someone else. But, you know, my concern again is not to dissolve any special districts. My concern is that we're operating effectively and efficiently. Consolidation of some special districts might be a way to look at it, or, you know, even to, to, to join, just two together, merger, sorry, I forgot, I'm sorry. To merge a couple of them, or to have consolidation of some districts. You know, we've talked about, Mr. Melzer brought up a few months ago, possibly taking our cemeteries and taking those districts and possibly merging them together into one to make them more efficient. You know, maybe taking some underfunded districts and making them consolidate into one larger district would make them all run more efficiently. We've got some districts that have huge cash, cash excesses in their banks. And I'll bring it up, the library district, that everyone's got their green card. And I'm not trying to ruin the library district, but what I'd like to know is, here's a district that has an excess of $2 million in their bank. And I'd like to look at why that is. Is that district, because it's growing exponentially against the rest of the county, should that be looked at for a possibility of a reduction in what they get to give back to the county? Would we rather have a sheriff's department that is fully funded, proper amount of deputies to run it? I see all the shaking of the head here. You don't want us to raise your taxes. You don't want to do anything with special districts. The county gets basically 6.5 cents of every tax dollar you spend to run this entire county, including law enforcement. And our library, our SWAC, the college, gets $2.2 million. The library gets almost half of what this county gets to run the entire county. You can say we don't do a good job of running it. Please don't blame me for prior commissions. You elected me to come in and look at ways to raise revenue for this county and run the county in a better, more efficient way. That's what I'm trying to do. You may agree or disagree with me, that's up to you. I'm doing what the majority of the people in this county voted me in to do. It's a hard thing that we have to do, and there's going to be a lot of people that disagree with it. But we have to find ways to pay the bills in this county. Or your governor will step in and she'll run it for you. And guess what the first thing the governor's probably going to do? How much are the bills at the county? Let's raise the tax assessment to that amount, and we'll pay the bills. So all I'm trying to do is work with everyone here and try and find better ways to get this done. And again, some of you agree with me and some of you don't. I would like to start the process of looking at each district that we have, and either consolidating some of them, merging some of them, and making sure that they're running properly. Thank you very much for coming.